Well.
Twenty twenty twice planning board meeting.
Do we have a quorum yet? Cause I, is there another member?
Yeah.
You've got the whole crew.
Oh, okay. Great, sir. I guess I'm not showing them all.
And if we.
Gotta put on Brady Bunch mode.
Associate member. Looks like everyone's here. Um, if we can, um, uh, begin the meeting by, uh, stating the presence, um, Kevin Heine, um, here. Present.
Clark Brewer here.
Amy Glassmark here.
Hugh, your Hudson here.
And Burgett Medvica here.
Thank you all. Um, we're also joined by, uh, town planner Cassandra Thayer and, uh, town, uh, council Carolyn Murray. And, um, we have one item on the agenda for this me, uh, evening's meeting. It is one thirty-five King Street. It is a continuation of a site plan review. There's nothing else, uh, on the agenda and, um, I'd like to, um, invite, uh, the other participants that are here to, um, if they wanted to take an opportunity to address, uh, the board with regard to the flurry, um, of, uh, submittals and what has been put back in the court of, um, the town. Um, I noticed some were received actually submitted yesterday, June tenth. Um, they were received by the town on the eleventh. And, um, uh, I don't want to speak for others with regard to their ability to, on the board to look at those items, but, um, if the applicants, um, want to take an opportunity to update the board on what they've submitted and bring us up to speed, um, I'd like to take some time, um, to do that. Um, before we have a chance to get into a deliberative process with the planning board members and any of, any members of the public following that.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, my name's William Murray with Places Associates. Can everybody hear me first off?
We can.
My, my lips are moving and making noise. This is a good thing. Uh, so in, uh, response to, to your comments on June third, we sent a letter with various attachments to address what we believe were most of the items. Uh, both brought up by members of the board and your peer review consultant, uh, is your peer review consultant here tonight? I can't see him on my screen.
He is not, and, um, unless I'm mistaken, he will not be joining us. Uh, he did have an opportunity to, um, review the submittals, um, but, uh, he did not, uh, obviously get a chance. Well, no, he did, um. He provided something, Cassandra, if you can, if you can clarify this, um, he did provide something, uh, with regard to a June tenth letter.
Sure. So, uh, P G B Engineering submitted, uh, what would be presumably their final peer review report late yesterday evening. Um, I received it today basically as a wide summary of the letter is that everything that they had initially commented on has, um, either been addressed or, uh, they made some recommendations for the board's decision.
Sure. And we're happy to, uh, go into some of those in a little bit. Uh, let's see. Share screen. I'm looking for the icon. Hmm hmm. Still looking for the icon. Oh, there it is. Uh, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So this would be our response letter dated June third, and I'll very briefly, uh, go through our comments. If at any time a board member wants to, uh, ask me a question, please interrupt me at any time. Um, so each of our comments, we've submitted, uh, supplemental information, which is included, which I'll talk about at the end because the way the the letter addresses the various items, and then we have appendices A through G, which supply the supplemental information. So.
Quickly into, I, I do not see anything yet. It's not intended. I just see us participants.
Have you swiped left or right here? Get to our display screen.
You may need to change your view settings, Burgett.
Maximize the views.
I'll work on it. Keep going.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the site lighting, uh, several board members expressed concern with compliance with dark sky standards, reduced night and low activity lighting and staggered lighting hours. Our, our electrical engineer, who is also the lighting consultant, uh, has confirmed that he has designed the site to dark sky standards and that all of the lights on the site have cut off, nothing, there is no uplighting. Um, so we do have an appendices that talks about the compliance with dark sky standards. We also have a photometric plan that shows that, uh, light splash as it leaves the property becomes zero. So we're not actually shining off of the property with any of the, the lights. We have, uh, low bollard lights, which are little post lights that are three to four feet tall and they have full, uh, light cut down so that they only shine down in a very small area to the walkway, uh, that they're located. So when I get to the appendices, we can pull up those items. Likewise, there was a concern about the site sign that the existing sign is an obstacle. Um, Chief Quigley has attached a sign, uh, which is a sample of what the sign type would be like. Maybe, maybe I guess I should go into the, uh, get these things resolved as I go. So site appendus A. Here's our electrical engineer, uh, that they confirm all the site lighting is pointed towards building it away from premises. Um, they go on to talk about a, a further item that we'll talk about, um, going into, there's our photometrics, wherever you see the yellow, there is no light spill off the property. So there's a little bit over in the front, front driveway. But to our neighbors, to all the other sides, we do not have light spilled. And of course this is a public safety facility, so we do need to have a fair amount of light, um, around the building at all times so that people can see when they enter onto the site. Uh, I'll go past that item, get to the chief's comment. Um, here is the sign, type of sign that, uh, the chief is envisioning granite posts with a um, you know, a carved, it could be either real wood or a stabilized wood product for the sign with the gold lettering. This is, uh, the town seal. And in all likelihood, this is going to be very similar to what the sign will be located and the sign will be located in the front yard in a location that it's both clearly visible, but won't block the lines of sight. Okay, um, grades drainage and driveway maintenance, uh, the fire chief has attached a letter saying that their existing driveway is nine point seven percent. And they have not had a concern with that regardless of the weather. Um, and that letter is attached. Chief Doc Gray has provided us that letter, appendix C. Um, so the, his conclusion is the ten percent grade at King Street should not affect the fire department vehicles responding to and returning from incidents. As we've been using the front ramp at forty-four Elm Street with a grade of nine point seven percent for sixty-three years with no issues in his, uh, paragraph above talks about the DPW supporting them in their current location.
Yeah, I would just add, um, that, that support would extend to like the front end of storms. If it was a sudden, um, occurrence type storm before there was mobilization of DPW, uh, it looked like the facility would have, uh, the support necessary for um, clear, clearing, sanding, treating, uh, the grade so that there wasn't an issue, uh, that was noted in the, uh, police chief's.
Right. So this is the, I, I didn't get to it, but you're right. This is the police chief's, uh, response. Uh, the department is funding to purchase an F two fifty with a plow which will be operated by trained personnel for site cleanup during smaller and rapid snow events. He also notes that the police department ha- currently has a snow blower, which they will be relocating to this site. So he's identified, uh, that DPW will provide sand and salt barrels as they do currently for Elm Street. Uh, and that will continue. So the, the police chief has addressed the the temporary time between, uh, the police department responding and taking care of their own driveway and snow removal. And when the DPW will finally catch up and then, uh, deal with it, uh, that's in the chief's letter to the board as well. Uh, landscaping, we have a letter from our landscape architect identifying that the site design utilizes native plants. Uh, he goes on to say that, uh, the plants, the wildflower mix is a longstanding mix and it will support, uh, pollinators. I, I don't know that we need to go to that letter per se. Um, we've provided documentation that discussions between the town of Cohassen and Mast D O T are in progress for the termination of a warrant for the installation of emergency signal. So as I explained before, what a warrant is, is a study that justifies, um, the placement of an emergency signal at that location. So a traffic engineer and Mast D O T will using standards that they've already established identify the traffic flow, the amount of accidents, site distances, what traffic comes in and goes out. And they'll determine whether a warrant to put, uh, a light there is appropriate. But the town has already reached out to your local legislators to assist in kind of greasing the wheels, if you will, with Mast D O T. So that this is already, um, a topic of discussion between the town and Mast D O T and your local legislators. Uh, the sewage disposal system, this is a kind of a complicated, which is totally in my, my court and the board of health. Uh, so I'll, I'll try and keep this as short as I can, uh, and then if anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer detailed, detailed questions. The, we did look into tying to the public sewer and there are quite a few obstacles to doing that. Your current wastewater treatment plant has, um, minimal excess capacity. And they're looking at upgrading that plant even now. So the DPW director has multiple times, uh, informed us that we should be chasing the onsite sewage disposal system option. Um, if we can, uh, if we do run a sewer line up to, uh, up by where the supermarket is, which is where the sewer manhole is, it's a public sewer line and that creates a complication in that it would be a sewer line installed for the benefit of a town entity. And then that would potentially get into issues relative to other people having the right or the ability to connect to it. Uh, it would be what's known as a force main. So we would pump from the police station up the hill. And then, uh, probably pump all the way, which would be a pretty big activity to do. A pump station to support the police station would oversize the generator on the site because it would have to be on the generator. So just in and of itself, the physical construction in, uh, the street will be a very big deal. Uh, and it will add substantially to the cost of the generator that we're proposing because you are required to have generator supply uh, for that kind of thing. And then finally, of course, three A is a Mast D O T. So we would need Mast D O T specific permission to install the sewer line in their highway, under their highway, even put it on the side of the road. And that process usually takes up to a year, to a year and a half. So for very many reasons, uh, connecting to municipal sewer was discarded fairly early on at the urging of the DPW director and based upon the other complications for, uh, extending and connecting. Does that mean the facility can never be connected? No, it doesn't. But as, as I've said, there are multiple things that need to happen. Uh, and if we were to pursue connecting to municipal sewer, it might delay, uh, this project more than a year um, because of some of those complications. Uh, a member of the board was discussing electric heat only. So we've this, or we've had our electrical engineer, but I think that this brief summary is, is probably good enough, but that the supporting documentation is provided. Um, a life cycle cost analysis was performed. And the building committee, based upon that life cycle cost analysis, uh, decided the all-electric system was suitable for the facility. Uh, and while I'm not actually able to go into details, we do have that document from G G D, who's our electrical engineer. And I'm happy to go to that document if, if the board wants additional information on that.
Um, I don't think we need to go to that, but they were ten, twenty, thirty year life cycle analysis and they should be entered into the file for this project, um, if they haven't already been submitted.
Yeah, it, it is included in here. Uh, the life cycle analysis was uh, twenty, thirty and forty years.
Twenty, thirty, forty. I see and corrected. Thank you.
And the annual expenses identified at sixty-eight thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars. Uh, they s- did not do a detailed study of the gas, but they have identified that gas in and of itself um, is less efficient than the electrical system that's proposed.
Can I, can I have another question on that? Can you stay with the, um, where we were just where, please? Um, yeah. Because.
Right here.
Yeah, right there. Because I think, yeah, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm not quite sure whether I'm reading it right, but it looks like there were just electrical options evaluated. So out of the, um, three different ones, the one that we are presented with here was chosen. But it doesn't look like, I mean, the, it, it says in general, you know, and kind of what gas efficiency is versus, um, the ineffi- efficiency of the chosen system. But it does not say that actual, you know, and kind of the usage of, of, of gas was evaluated. So, yeah, I kind of, that's at least what I'm reading out of this. So, I mean, the criticism that we brought up and correct me if I'm, I'm, I'm not reading it right, right? But the criticism that we brought up was that an all-electric system, no, no matter which one of the three chosen, you know, is in the long run, not very cost efficient because electric, electricity is, is very expensive. So that was, that was the basis, right? Um, so could we get clarification on which types of system actually were compared here?
Um, there's no question that we can, but I would just remind the planning board that, um, the how we heat and power the facility, our obligation to the planning board is to prove that we have sufficient utilities and infrastructure to support the facility. I know that you're all members of the community, but as a planning board, how we heat and the methodology that we heat is not really your call. It is the building committee's call, which they've already made.
Well, it, it is, but it was brought up by members of the board here. It was addressed in your comments and duly noted that uh, life cycle analysis is we've done twenty, thirty, forty years. I want that life cycle analysis a part of the application or part of the paperwork for this consideration for the site plan review. Um, i- i- yes, th- this is an item and when it was brought up at the last meeting was noted as something that is on the periphery of the, um, um, oversight of this board. So to the extent that you've addressed it in your comments, a life cycle analysis has been done and those costs are known and they're known by all involved in this board, outside this board, other boards, the town. I want it to be on the record for that. And so I, I don't see the detailed life cycle analysis in this paperwork. So circling back to my point at the beginning of this topic, I want that life cycle analysis as a part of this planning board record. Um, and it will also be on the record that we discussed that. You know, I, it, it, the, the part of the reason for that is this town has already run up into financial issues with other um, aspects of its budget and it's cited, part of the reasons for those is increased utility rates. So as long as people are going into this and the boards that, um, are, I do have more jurisdictional oversight of this. And I'm talking about other boards, not the planning board here. I want it on our record that this was front and center, a concern of this board. And as long as it was addressed and the town is okay with that and realizes what the issue is going forward and the concerns, then, you know, that's going to be a decision that's going to be made by other boards and outside the purview of this board duly noted. I just want that life cycle analysis in here. And I think from what I read, I didn't see the details that that life cycle analysis went to a full life cycle analysis of other means of heating the building.
Thanks.
Like, um, Birgit had, had just identified, um, be it natural gas tapping into the existing line that, that exists over there. Um, or a, um, quasi, um, heat pump type system, which while it does use electricity, it uses it in a more efficient manner than traditional electric system, which is I think what this life cycle analysis did. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah. So we've supplied you a, a summary of the life cycle analysis and you want the complete document. Understood.
Absolutely.
I can, I can talk to that.
Uh, so that is Paula Claridge, who's the architect for the project. There you are. Hi Paula.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay. I was trying to speak. I didn't think I was getting through. Um, I can speak to the life cycle cost analysis as part of our response. We said that we can submit it if the board was interested in seeing that. So we can definitely send that along. So you have it for your reference and as part of the record as well. The three options that were studied, the first option was an air source heat pump chiller and a heater with backup electric boiler. Option two was an air source variable refrigerant flow heat pump H V A C system. And then the third option was a closed loop geothermal H V A system, which also used the V R F. Um, no mass system was analyzed as part of the options because our engineers were trying to take advantage of the incentives that are offered by National Grid to try to help offset some of the costs for the installation of the new system as well as, um, just from their experience. And for code reasons, electric just seemed to make more sense as far as efficiency as well as the offsets for the rebates that were available.
Hey, I'll, I'll just note for the record, National Grid is in the business of cell electricity. So everyone knows that and they're in a long-term business and it's a monopolistic business based on jurisdictions. So um, incentives are great, but, um, just uh, I'm sure the incentives were a part of the life cycle analysis. It'd be interesting to know when the details are submitted as a part of this package, what the future cost, um, assumptions were made for that analysis with regard to the pricing of electricity that would be supplied by the national utility that surprise, that will, will be the provider, um, i- into the future here. So we don't have to get bogged down with this. I appreciate the additional explanation. I just want that life cycle analysis detailed and now, um, uh, materials to be a part of the application record for this. So that's going to be a, a condition of any type of, um, approval if we get to that, uh, discussion of that. Thank you.
Fair enough.
You can submit that. That's fine.
Yep. Uh, moving on. Uh, storm drainage. Uh, we did send updated storm drainage analysis and calculations and I guess, uh, that's part of the P G B engineering review. So with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'll address that when we get to his letter. Um, and again, peer review, his, his letter, we'll get to that towards the end of my conversation. Uh, P V ready design, uh, we've submitted, uh, one line documents, which are part of the construction documents uh, from the electrical engineer, uh, demonstrating that we have conduits to the roof and space on the panel. Um, or spaces being reserved on the panel, uh, as well as controls and disconnects are all part of the project. Uh, the P D photovoltaic panels are not part of the project due to cost reasons, but the building will be solar ready. The structure, the structural engineer and the architect have designed the building to support the P V panels. Uh, so the infrastructure for it is part of the project. Going to snow storage, um, we discussed that snow storage exists all throughout the project, uh, principally on the lower level, it'll be available where it is today, other than the fact that we're going to have, uh, a guide rail, a wooden guide rail at the edge of the park, a little bit off the edge of the parking to the front, because that slope is kind of steep and it's a public facility, not a private facility. Uh, but they currently plow to the edges on the lower level. And then on the upper level, we have many different level areas adjacent to the parking area where snow can be stored. And in all of the cases, the melting snow will be directed into the stormwater system. Uh, and then I think, uh, exterior materials, I'll go to the very end of our document because the architect has submitted that as a rather large, where did it go? Well, here we go. And Paula, do you want to jump in on this one?
Yes. So the materials, as I explained at our last hearing, were selected to try to, um, play off of the materials that are on the existing building. It's all brick. Uh, but also to introduce some materials that kind of reference the coastal location that Cohasset is in. So and to soften the look of the building, make a little bit more community friendly. So the brick that we're introducing on the two additions will match the existing brick on the, um, central portion of the building. And then everything kind of about the second level up will be this board and battened fiber cement siding. Having the brick down low will also help with the durability of the building, just as things kind of always bash up against buildings down at pedestrian levels. So the brick will help protect the building a little bit more from any damage. And then the windows, all the existing windows that will remain are being replaced with energy efficient fiberglass windows, which will also be used in the two additions. And then we're introducing these resinous planks around the main entryway to try to play up the main entrance to the building. And those are also very durable, can stand up to a lot of abuse and wear well as well.
Uh, so then, let's see. That's not what I wanted. Let's see if I can find. There we go. Uh, this is, so P G B Engineering is your peer review consultant. And in this letter, which we received yesterday, um, he addresses his various comments from his two reviews uh, that he has done. So his first review was uh, the site plan, but he didn't have the drainage calculations. Uh, and then this review addresses the drainage calculation. So I'll very quickly again, go through these items. Um, and happy to stop at any time, uh, to take questions or clarify. Uh, the, the initial comment early on was the gas main is not shown to be removed, but now on the current plans that he reviewed, they are, uh, removed and shown to be capped. Uh, he addresses the fact that a zoning compliance table should have been provided and it's been added to the cover sheet which demonstrates that we exceed the fif- fifty percent maximum coverage in the water resource district. Uh, which will require a Z E B A permit and he acknowledges that we acknowledge that that's required. Uh, items A through E are storm water and I think is you will look, um, almost all of them say addressed with the exempt one of landscape catch basins. So at the top of the hill, both at the top of the stone slope behind the building and at the bottom of the stone slope, um, remote from the parking area, we have, uh, plastic catch basins. They're not made out of concrete. They're plastic because all we're trying to do is capture storm uh, groundwater. And he originally suggested that we have sumps, but we described the fact that the sump captures debris uh, and acts as a filtration system, but because you can't get on that slope with a vacuum truck or you can't get to these things, we don't want sumps. We want whatever comes in these uh, catch basins to flow right through. None of them discharge to a recharge system so that they will eventually discharge to some, a catch basin or another drainage structure that we can do main, maintain. So he says he's satisfied here. We are satisfied with place's response. Um, and that was the reasoning that we did that. Other than that, we have. Um, and that was the reasoning that we did that. Other than that, we have. Uh, addressed his drainage concerns. Um, with the updated drainage system design and as a note, we did in fact file with the Conservation Commission. This week for a stormwater permit. Um, he again reiterates a watershed resort district permit is required. Uh, oh, this one is the holding tank. So we discuss the fact that the floor drains in the building will go to a holding tank because we don't go to sewer. Uh, and he wanted a double wall fiberglass tank with interstitial monitoring, which we said we are providing. The reason he didn't get that from me is those, that tank is specified on the plumbing engineer's plan. So the plumber will be installing that, not the site contractor. So uh. We don't have, he recommends a condition for a double wall tank with interstitial monitoring. That's already part of the project. Uh, and we have. No issue with either providing. The detailed information from the plumbing plan or the board making it a condition or requirement. Uh, he had a comment about the handicap accessible space on the front of the building. Uh, he wanted us to move the accessible space to the passenger side. Or the the stripe space, if you will. But because we're putting an E V charger on this site, uh, the ADA standards, the Americans with disability standards. States that generally a person with a disability driving an E V will need the access aisle position on the driver's side. So uh the design as originally presented is not going to be modified to accommodate the. The fact that we're putting a charging station there. Uh, the trash truck, we noticed, we discussed briefly that currently the fire and police department use totes. Um, and in the event that that. Concrete pad becomes a dumpster pad. Um, we identified to the board that because this is a controlled facility. The police department will be able to uh coordinate the timing of emptying of trash if that eventually comes about. But currently they still use the totes and that's what's anticipated to be used for the foreseeable future. Uh, a French front setback dimension, uh, the dimension leader has been corrected. Uh, there are forty eight parking spaces shown on the plans, which is correct. Um, retaining walls fun fall under the definition of structure. And again, we've stated that we have not completed the final application. To the zoning board of appeals and some of these retaining walls are within the side setbacks. So therefore we need goes on appeals for that. Uh, and once again, the sewage disposal system. Has not been finalized. So um. We are working with the Conservation Commission and the Board of Health. We. Had to get permission from the Conservation Commission to dig on the lot across the street because it's got extensive wetlands. So now we are trying to schedule that testing and we'll be coordinating all of that, both with conservation. And the Board of Health. Uh, and then these other items, one, two, three, and four. Are all specific to the revised drainage and as you'll note, they say addressed, addressed. Addressed and addressed. So he is satisfied with the drainage system design as revised. Uh. And I believe.
I appreciate you running us through that, uh, Mr. Murray.
Yeah, here is, by the way, the one line diagram. Um, I don't know if you really want to see it, but. Uh, future meter for P V smart, P V of course is the photovoltaic system. And then we show all the the various connections and. The reservation of uh. Capacity and conduits, et cetera, et cetera, for.
That's, that's what makes your project solar ready, right?
Solar ready, correct. Yep.
So I want the board to, I just have a um opportunity to go through um and see if there are any um. Concerns, comments, or other um. On an individual basis, um, I'll start off and um I would like to see the double wall tank be a provision uh for approval. Um, it is um a project within the Water Resources District, and I think the study necessitates necessitates a double wall uh tank. And um I do have a question with regard to that and the interstitial monitoring. Is there going to be an accompanying monitoring and maintenance plan um for that? Uh, double wall. System with interstitial monitoring? Um, or is it just going to be installed and turned on and let be and. Uh, until someone turns it off or until it overflow overflows? I mean, what? Is required for monitoring and maintenance plan for interstitial double wall tank?
So that's a very good question. Yeah, the, so it's got two alarms. Uh, the tank has two alarms. One is a high water alarm and the high water alarm uh is set when the tank water level reaches two thirds or sixty six percent of the capacity of the tank. So uh, that's one alarm and the other alarm is the interstitial monitoring. Both of them trigger an audio, which is a strobe light and uh, no, the audio is the buzzing noise. Uh, and the visual is a strobe light that'll be mounted in all likelihood. Inside the Sallyport or one of the fleet garages. And you cannot um not know. What those alarms are that the alarm panel will say. Uh, floor drain holding tank and you can silence it for a period of time, but then it starts again. Uh, so you can reset it for a short period of time, but it it then resets itself. So. It is a self-monitoring system and once the alarm goes off, it's very obvious to anybody that uh. This, this needs attention and somebody needs to deal with it. So there is no need to to have a uh. A contract for monitoring. Number one, the tank manufacturer gives us at least a twenty five year warranty. But number two, any, any overage, any overfill when it reaches its capacity or any leakage, it. You know, sounds that very visible alarm and very noisy alarm.
So what does someone do though? So that's the purpose of a maintenance plan. Um, you know, that an alarm goes off and someone can silence it and they got other stuff to do and it's not the places and. Uh, you know, in in a uh. Uh, unhealthy condition where people need to evacuate it, but there's annoying alarm going off. And you know, and it happens at someone's house and it's a fire, you know, thing they. Replace the battery or wait till they replace the battery or pull it out. But in this case, something could possibly overflow. You know, what is the procedure for actually getting the um. Uh, reason for the occurrence of the alarm mitigated um and corrected. So. I I think you, there needs to be some provision of a plan and having a twenty year or whatever year warranty. So that um that the alarm sound or visually sound. Um, is great from a uh performance standpoint, but what do people do? And people don't necessarily know um when something is overflowing, you know, who to call and what the um nature of that call should be. Um, is it something to the plumber? Is it something to another type of contractor? Is it to um, are you a a contractor that? Does pump outs services, that type of thing. So I think there needs to be some provision of a. Um, a monitoring and or maintenance plan so that people know how to. Keep this thing in perpetuity even beyond um the. Uh, warranty period, but also to know how to respond accordingly when it sounds. Maybe we already have some of these in some other buildings. I don't, I need to photocopy that or something. You just need a provision for it.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not you're buying something and it's installed and we're good to go here. Uh, until. We, we, we got something overflowing and there's a, there's a, there's an issue here beyond. You know, beeps and and flashing, so um.
Well, I mean, the, the alarm goes off at, at. Sixty six percent of the capacity of the tank, which means there's going to be quite a bit of space before it actually has any potential to overflow. And this is what is what's considered non-hazardous uh waste. So it's, it's simply pumped out by a septic collar and it's taken to a wastewater treatment plant. So it's not um. The, it's not high science and the fire department currently has. Had a floor drain holding tank. So this is not something that's new to the town. Um, but I will leave the, the. Yes, it's a reasonable request on your part for an operation and maintenance. Uh, and I will get with bulk chiefs and and pull something together and submit it to you.
Um, I don't think I had any other questions and I'll turn it over to other board members um alphabetically. I, I just, one thing you did mention was regard to the um E V. Charging station and um. The charging port for a vehicle being on the, did I, did I hear correctly? It was on the driver's side? Um, some vehicles, it's on the passenger side. I just.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's, it's, well, this, this one is a, a new criteria. The, the new building code. Requires that we uh provide E V charging stations and therefore we have new code requirements. Uh, and the ADA standards identifies that some cars have them on the right front, some cars have them on the left front, some cars. Uh, the bottom line is they're everywhere on various models. Uh, but ADA, so here we are here. This is the space that we're talking about. The charger base will be here and it's going to be an eighteen foot long cord. So we'll be able to reach around virtually any vehicle.
Perfect.
ADA requires that this space, first off, this parking space needs to be eleven feet. Which is bigger than a standard accessible space. Uh, and they want the access aisle on the driver's side. So this is what we're talking about right here. And then down here, one, two, three, four are also charging stations. And then we have three charging stations up here to meet with the new code requirement. Um, and all of those again will have uh. You know, the large cords and the intent is each charging station can serve two parking spaces.
Right. Thanks for pointing out that additional detail and how we are going to um with the design um that's in front. Of us here will meet the um forthcoming uh requirements. Um, Birgit, do you want to start? Um, I'm just looking at Hollywood Squares here and Clark and then um Amy. And then Deirdre perhaps?
Um, I um have a question with respect to to parking and I'm um may have missed that point. So Nick, in, in the um, um. Where does the public park? Are they allowed to go to the back?
No.
No.
The, the, the purpose of these islands, that the island will have. A painted sign and the sign and symbol says. Authorized entry only.
Got it.
Public is here.
Yeah.
There's no, no gate, but there are islands sign here and sign there.
Yeah, that was my question, you know, and kind of how do we inform the, the, the public of where, you know, kind of um they are supposed to, like their area, where to stay in. Okay, thank you. Yes.
These three spaces will say have a sign. Fire Department Parking Only. So that's where the staff of the Fire Department are intended to park.
Got it. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So this Amy Glassmeyer, I have a question. Was there any attempt? To determine technically. The ratio between the ports for the electricity for charging stations. Um. Uh, we, we, it's not that big of a deal. Figure out how many Teslas are on the, on the road and you can run it either nationally or you can run it for the state of Massachusetts. But I have to say the majority of the automobiles that I'm familiar with that have an E V. Charging port is it's on the passenger side and it, it may not be. So was there any investigation or is that just, we decided we're going to do it like that? What's the explanation for that?
Well, are you asking about the quantity or the locations of the?
The location on the vehicle, the vehicle charge, uh automobiles. To build automobiles, you want to change the fewest things possible. So what did they do? They put the gas. On the driver's side and they put the electric on the passenger side and that's pretty much convention. So why are we doing something that's? Not seeming to respond to that design condition?
The chargers that we're providing are at the head of the parking spaces so that you can access it regardless of what side of the vehicle your port is on.
Split it down, basically splits the car down the middle and says either side.
It's in between two spaces, so you can. Choose which side to park on depending on where your port is.
Okay.
And it's serviced by an eighteen foot cord, I heard.
Yeah.
Which has pluses and minuses. Eighteen feet will let you wrap around certain vehicles, but you're going to lose, you're going to get some imp- impediment. Impediment to the current delivered by the longer the cord they have too.
So this is the actual, um, this is from the U S federal government. It's the ADA. Um, requirement for E V chargers. And here is the examples of charging in locations. So Tesla's on the driver's side. A Nissan, it's on the front. You know, Audi, Porsche, Hyundai, you can see that uh. Passenger side, driver's side, passenger side, front, et cetera, et cetera. So they are not uniform um. In their design, uh, and that's why we have large charging cords. And that's why the charging station. Is located at the front so that it can ideally, you want to be able to charge. Two vehicles at one time. As in they show here.
Okay, so one other uh related question is about maintenance. So as more cars have E V capability. It's becoming obvious, looking at the equipment, that the equipment is actually not going to survive. Um, a, a very long life. If you, if you go to various place, because you can see that the cords. Themselves wear out, some of the, the, the elastic that pulls the cord back uh wears out. So do we have any um basis for uh maintenance of that?
Paula, you want me to do that?
No, I think that at the end of the project, when we have, when construction is completed, the town will get an owner's manual. Which has all of the maintenance and warranties and everything in that. And I would think that if any of the parts of these charging stations. Become damaged or worn, that you would call the manufacturer. Their contact information is all in this owner's manual. And you could call the manufacturer to have them either repaired or replaced, or if the whole machine goes bad, you can use the warranty to have it replaced or buy a new one. So. There are provisions for that in the owner's manual at the end of construction.
Okay. Okay, so it, it transferred, that information is transferred by um type. So that the town knows how to manage it. I thank you.
Yeah, uh, I just have a couple of. Uh, quick comments first. Um, I'm grateful that the. Um, the town's uh consultant has done such a thorough job with the um planning board site, site plan review. Uh, the site plan review criteria are, are. Pretty limited to safety and drainage and um a few other, other issues. That um, that I think have been addressed. Um, um, and. While I, I, I think I, I made a, a comment about the three parking spots uh along the drive aisle.
Mm hmm.
About not striping them. Um, whatever our public safety officials think is, is adequate, however, that's a staging area, I think. Uh, would take precedent over, over what, what I would think in that matter. But in that corner. I, I think it also makes sense for um the public safety officials and perhaps uh the applicant's consultant to, to um. To take a look at that corner and see if it can be opened up at all um on the adjacent property. I, I know we, there's, there's a. A storage building that got planned there, but you want to make sure that. That no fencing or, or, or large signage um goes in that um. That would impede your uh sightlines out of the, out of your facility and, 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 and um. With, with regards to signalization that I think I, I, I brought up that we've, we see in situ at further down three A. Uh, whatever you, you, you guys work out with Mastod, I think it, it is, obviously it's going to be acceptable to. To, to the planning board. It, it may be that there's something that you do like some strobes or um some signage. Uh, that um Mastod is okay with and provides an additional. Uh, layer of, of safety. Particularly because it's um off hours, it's a fast area. Um, during the day, it's a heavily trafficked area and I, I think I, I think I can um. Uh, trust our, our public safety officials and their consultants to, to try to figure this piece out without necessarily making it a. A specific condition. I, I, while I brought it up, I. I think you're gonna, you're gonna be able to negotiate something that makes sense to you that Mastod can deal with. Uh, so again. Uh, in closing, I want to thank you for your efforts on this.
Uh, thank you. And, and let me give you some assurances. The town. Owns a fifteen foot wide easement that runs from, from the driveway. Or King Street up towards the back of the property because. Or King Street up towards the back of the property, because if you look at the property right now, there's a gravel. Stone driveway that gets access to the back of the existing building. Um. Let's see, do I have the, yeah. It it's right there and it comes up like that. So we you actually have rights. In this area so that nothing can be built there because you have the right to pass and repass to get to this area.
Yeah, and that grade that right there is is quite high. So if there is any any ability to cut that slope down um and but definitely make sure that no obstructions get. Get installed there so the condition is worse.
And then to see if come on computer, you can load it. Uh. I'm looking for my sign legend. Uh. So what you can see here, these are warning signs that are. Federal standards. It's the manual of uniform traffic control. Which Mast D O T will let us in. We are required to post four hundred feet away from.
Yeah.
Entry on both sides. So it's a standard. Warning for a fire truck and a standard outline for a police car. This would be a white police car and blue background. That would be a black truck on a yellow background. The the feds pick the colors, not me. Um, so those would be posted on three at a minimum. And again, you know, we've already talked about the fact that. The town is pursuing much more than that.
Great.
Yeah, I don't, uh, Deirdre hasn't um made any comments, uh, follow up comments yet, but it seems to me that this is in uh the condition to close. The public hearing and and uh uh vote on condition decision.
No, I I am, I agree with you, Clark. I only just want to commend. Uh, P G B and our applicant. You've done a very thorough job. You've answered the questions and the issues. I do um. Hope that we can have as a condition, though, the double wall tank. Um, issue is uh Kevin has pointed out, so we make sure that that is taken care of. I also. Strongly, and I know our public safety officials and I I commend them on all their work on this, will work strongly with Mast dot. Um, it is an incredibly. High traffic area, seeing the accident that just occurred two days ago. Right there, right down from right up from where um the new safety, public safety building will be. Um, kind of scary that um we just need to make sure that we're. Making sure that the egress and 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 every aspect aspect of that. Facility has safety and that the public is aware that that is what's, you know, what's going on there. That's all I have to say, but thank you very much. I think it's very thorough.
Thank you.
Thanks, uh, board members for um uh voice and um your your questions and points on here. I did have a um. Quick follow up to Clark's uh point with regards to traffic control. Is there any provision for a crosswalk? In the vicinity of um this proposed site plan. Um, for uh connecting this. Um, south side. Of Route three A with the north side of Route three A at all? Anywhere in this uh site plan uh that's in front of us?
No.
So where is the nearest crosswalk as it exists now? Are 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 you as a designer um? Aware of where it is?
Uh, I'm not. Uh, it's pretty far away.
There's one at Sawyer Street.
So I I I'm just, I'm bringing this up now. It just occurred to me as Clark was pointing out with regard to. Is this a building designed only to get in and out of through a vehicle?
Yeah.
Kevin, that's usually Mast dot. They're gonna control where those crosswalks wind up. Am I correct?
That's true.
Yes.
Yes, uh, the problem we have is uh. If I were to do a sidewalk going up a ten percent driveway, it's not an accessible sidewalk. Uh, so it would immediately prohibit an accessible person from getting to the site. So it is a vehicle access site, yes.
Hmm. Um, you know, the silence is somewhat deafening here. Is is that okay? I I I mean, this is a public building and it's not on the town common. And it's for the citizens of this town and any others that need to interact, um, whatever the reasons are. Um, and they may or may not have vehicular access to this other than through a a third party. Um, this is 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 this? Are we looking something here? I mean, maybe this is something I'm gonna ask Carolyn to opine on here.
I I agree with you, maybe um uh Chief Quigley can respond to that. Um, but again, it it's something I'm not sure planning board has any. Control over whether or not this, I understand what you're saying completely, but I'm just curious. I think it's still.
One of one of the provisions for a site planning board review and site plans. Is consideration of the convenience of safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site.
Yeah, I understand.
So there's also access to and from the site. No site is an island. Certainly something in a public safety role like this one is so.
Um, but there's still no, there's no crosswalk as far as I know that I've seen by the preserve. And people are walking down there every day. So I'm just curious what the chief thinks.
Sure, um, you you're exactly right, Deirdre. Uh, there's no no crosswalk. At the preserve, the closest one, like Clark said, is at Sawyer Street. Um. There are, there, Clark may be familiar with this. There are some conceptual plans from Mast dot. They were prepared. Right around twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. I actually have the drawings. But this section of King Street is due to be. Addressed by Mast dot once the. The three A Beechwood uh project is complete, uh, which that that just started the thinking two years. So. There are conceptual plans that really dramatically uh changes that whole stretch. So. There probably will be sidewalks there in the next, I would guess, five years or so. And I could and I could share with you those conceptual plans. I think I. Um, I I I have, they're actually on our Facebook page, um, as we shared about years ago.
We we used to have a a a big twenty foot long roll that covered this area that we had a a conceptual designer.
Yes.
But if you have the file, I mean, at some point in the future, if there are sidewalks. Um, and this area became more of a pedestrian area. Would it be possible, let's ask the architect, would it be possible? Um, to to have a a handicap accessible. Um, to uh our facility, a regular handicap ramp is. Is um. What is the angle?
It's one and twenty or one and twenty without handrails, one and twelve is the maximum slope.
Right, right. But uh, how does that correspond to the nine point seven? Um. Uh, that slope of the driveway. I mean, we wouldn't be putting a handicap accessible. Um. Uh, ramp or walkway to the building in the in the um in the driveway. Um. Presumably it would be in the shoulder on the north side or the up on the uh. But that would be something that would be done in the future.
Exactly, and there is.
Because you have handicap parking spots, you just, um, there's there's no. Place that a handicapped person is coming from without sidewalks. They'd be in the street.
Correct. There there is no sidewalk on this side. Uh, and the nearest crosswalk is up by the market supermarket. Here, well, that's the bank. And there. And uh to the north of us. It's pretty darn far away.
So, you know, for the record, handicap persons are already using three A in the absence of sidewalks on it. Uh, and if this is not a part of this approval. Uh, that we're considering at this point in time, and um like Chief Quigley said, uh, there are. Preliminary plans for incorporation of this in the future and based on what um. Mister Murray said, you know, duly noting that that the the front area has an existing slope that would need to be overcome um through the use of ramps. Um, is there room for ramps? Should those come in the future? To adequately address this issue when it it probably not if, but when it arises at some point. Uh, past where it is in front of us at this point in time. I think we're just trying to make sure we have some information. Yeah.
Yeah, we we it would be a multi-switchback.
Yeah.
In the front yard to get to the building.
I I I I would agree with that, given the existing slope that you're dealing with on the driveway alone. And just knowledge of the site and the way it does rise up um on that frontage. But that's not a provision of the existing plans, understood, but um there. Nothing's going in there now that would impede that in the future, it sounds like. That that would be an area that could be um. Accessed in the future, um, when some requirement does come for. Uh, providing a a connector to a sidewalk um with the re- redevelopment at this part of the corridor. I- i- is that what I heard that? You're not putting that you're not putting a sign in there that can't be moved, or you're not putting in a tank that can't be put a ramp on top of it? Yada, yada, yada.
Correct, that the front lawn is available for. Reconfiguration if need be, the front slope.
Okay, um, is there anyone in the public that um needs to um or perhaps wishes to weigh in at this time with regard to the um. Site plan and its review?
You have two members of the public here, neither of which have their hands raised and nobody has utilized the Q and A as of yet.
Okay, I'll just pause for a moment to see if anyone wishes to do so. And if so, um, we would ask you to identify yourself by name and address.
Uh. Kevin, what about council? Um, does council have any um instructions or or on this um site plan review for us?
Thanks for asking, but no, I don't have any questions at this time.
Or or do you have any uh instructions for us?
It, no, I think you've been outlining as you're going some of the conditions that you want to see built into the decision. Um, I suppose you could add with respect to, um, you know, the A D A ramps and the switchback system. Uh, nothing hurts to add in that in the event in the future that Mast D O T approves. You know, the installation of sidewalks, they would keep that area in front clear so as to accommodate A D A ramps. You could add something like that if you choose.
Thank you.
Uh, so in the absence of anyone in the public wishing to weigh in on this, um, I would entertain a motion that uh includes um. Uh, the advancement of this, the approval of this with conditions. Uh, as um Carolyn pointed out, um, a condition for uh future A D A access to um sidewalk development in the area. Um, the um.
Excuse me, Kevin, do we want to just close the public hearing first and then go to conditions, condition motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you.
Um. And then you you just say all in, all those in favor, roll call vote.
All those in favor uh to close the public hearing for uh site plan review of one thirty five King Street, um, alphabetical order.
Clark Brewer, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Doug Smith, I.
And I think you were you were outlining a motion um for a decision.
Um, yeah, I would um like it to include um a provision of the conditions that we um. Raised during the discussion of this, the A D A uh future um adequacy for um accommodation of that. Uh, for um. In in inclusion of a double walled um uh holding tank with interstitial monitoring and preparation. Preparation of an accompanying monitoring and maintenance plan for such system. The um. Uh, provision of um a a traffic study and our mitigation measures as um put forth and. I believe funded by the state. Um, my understanding from appendix E on the June third correspondence is that um. Uh, request to the state delegates was for funding uh support for the design and uh institution of um. Uh, a a appropriate traffic mitigation and or lighting measures along um Route three A for. The one thirty five King Street uh development. So I saw those three items. Was there any, were there any more?
Mister Chair, you had also asked for the full lifecycle report for the electrical system.
I did. Thank you very much. Um, I would like conclusion of that in the um. Uh, record for the um. Applicant uh site plan review of this project. If no one else has any others um and wishes to put forth a motion, I'll entertain that.
Well, I I'll make a motion that incorporates all all the um comments that you made and and you also uh referenced comments made by uh planning board members. During the hearing to to put that in a decision.
Second.
All those in favor, alphabetical.
Clark Brewer, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Hobson, I.
Doug Smith, I.
That's a unanimous vote. That's that's great. Hopefully we'll get a new police station in uh um soon.
Thanks. I appreciate the applicant's time and efforts with this. Um, thank you for following up um with your additional um. Uh, presentation this evening and your astute attention to the comments and um issues raised by this board. Thank you.
Briget had one to raise her.
Okay.
Yeah, before we close, right, um, uh, we had um a request for a member um. From either the planning board or the open space um to join the. Um, what it used to be roads and sidewalks. I think it's called now Sidewalk Safety and Connectivity Committee. And um, I would like to volunteer to um join them and um or, you know, kind of if. Anybody else.
That sounds good.
Has any, yeah, the kind of like, since I'm already on the open space. Yeah, kind of, I'm kind of, kind of having both covered if you want.
Do we, do we vote on that?
Yeah, so like that was my question. Do you need to vote on this?
Appointments.
So typically I do it so that um when all of the appointments are up for the boards, various. Appointments on other boards, um, it is voted in.
Yeah. Okay, great. Something that I don't think I've talked about at all is I got appointed to the Historic District Extension Study Committee. And um, it it probably makes sense for all of us to talk to, talk about what what we've been doing uh. Officially outside the planning board on our various committees. Maybe not tonight.
I can put that on for the next agenda.
That sounds great.
Hey, if um we have no such other business, um, I would like to just inquire with regard to our future um meetings that are scheduled and um how things are. Stacking up for them.
Sure. So right now, um, with the close of this hearing, you do not have any applications before you. Um, your next meeting is June twenty fifth. Um, so right now you don't have anything for that meeting that needs to be accomplished. However. Um, at the meeting prior to this, with the withdrawal of Zero Black Horse Lane, I do anticipate them coming back at some point. But I haven't heard from them, so I don't have an exact timeline on that. Um, it could be that they come in with enough time to. Be on the twenty fifth's agenda, um, but I I don't know that as of yet.
Um, I'd like to ask a question of, and it's a fact finding on your part. So. Um, when we were discussing the um continuing development of Black Horse Lane. There was a question about the property that was supposedly designed by um a. Exceedingly well-known uh landscape architect. And I think that if we are going to continue with that issue, that we need to be informed of that. And we need to, you know, and and so can we get a report on the property and. The state of the situation right now. I understand that there's been some discussion about uh existing easements. That may actually save the town money in terms of water provision. So if you could do some investigating and give us a lay of the land so that the next time we see this, we are intelligently informed, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, I can, um, you know, once I know. Sure, I can, um, you know, once I know when they're coming back, I can have that ready, um, ahead of the, whatever meeting it is for the board to review.
So I think it's gonna be a research project, and that's why I'm asking it for now because even if they come back in the twenty-fifth, it might be that it exhausts any spare time you have to do the investigation. So, um, I'd like to know sooner than later.
Great. Uh, well, I can do my, uh, best efforts to find out some background information, um, and see what I drum up.
Great. I'm sure you do. Just terrific.
I, I can make a motion to adjourn if.
Hold it, hold it. And I, I just, I think I heard Cassandra say that she likes to have, you know, kind of, um, our positions voted in, is that correct? So like, we didn't vote on me yet, so to, to join.
So I don't think we have, I don't, I don't see any issue with you joining that at this time. I think the formal vote on that, um, would be um, in the affirmative by all, by everyone in support of that, um, at the time that we looked at other, um, slots to fill. So, um.
And, and ultimately, don't, don't we make a recommendation to the select board?
Correct.
To these appointments and the select board goes along with it unless there's a really good reason not to.
Correct. So typically, Briget, it's a separate agenda item that covers, so there's, uh, multiple positions on different committees and boards, and so they're all covered under the same agenda item, and then that is submitted to the select board for their recommendation.
But this is just for a liaison. This is not a position, position on.
Yep, it's the liaison seat on the various boards and committees.
She could go to a meeting if there's a scheduled meeting, right? She doesn't have to wait.
Yeah.
And not participate.
Yeah, and, and we did not do the same. So like, for me, joining the open space, we did not do that. So, yeah, and this did not go through a select board hearing or anything like that. I, yeah, kind of, we, we decided here that I can be the, um, liaison to open space and, and, and I went on. So.
Correct. Yep. So the board makes the decision here as an agenda item, and then I relay the information to the select board through Tracy Connors, who is their, um, staff admin.
Yeah, that's basically how I got on CPC.
Me, you can just go, Briget.
Yeah, in the interim.
The formality.
You can be, begin that role.
We don't have to wait. And it's, it's not that I have to wait for the select board meeting to happen. You, Cassandra, as I understand right now, right? You, you will inform Tracy of this move and then that's, um, um, our duty done.
So, yes, so in the meantime, you can attend the meetings.
And until what?
So when, uh, when it is an agenda item, the board will officially vote to appoint you to that liaison seat. But you can still attend the meetings in the meantime.
The board being the select board?
No, no, the.
This board.
This board.
Planning board make a recommendation to the select board for these appointments?
Yes.
And then the select board are the ones that actually make, make the appointments? Or do I have that wrong?
So like, I'm sorry, I'm confused about it too.
It's a formality. We say this is the person's gonna do it and they.
They're like, thanks, rubber stamp.
Yes.
Yeah.
Go, Briget, go.
Okay, okay, okay. So that's what I wanted to know. It's just, we, we agree here now, perfect. You tell Tracy and then we are done.
Yes, you are the person doing this. You may begin doing this yesterday.
Pretty good.
Yeah, I hear a second to adjourn. Uh, motion to adjourn. Seconded. Okay, all in favor, adjournment of, um, the June eleventh, uh, twenty twenty-five planning board meeting. All in favor, say aye. Alphabetical roll call, please.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Deidre Hobson, aye. Doug McVieja, aye.
Thank you all. Thanks, John, Kevin. Everyone.
Thanks, bye-bye.
Enjoy the sun.